Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Fort Road, Port Isabel, Texas on the eighteenth day of November two thousand and fifteen at the hour of six P. M. for the consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on November twelfth, two thousand and fifteen at two ten P. M. In accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting Act and a copy has been furnished to the County Clerk in Cameron County, Texas. Item one, the meeting is called to order. There is a quorum. All Board members are present. Item two we'll dispense with. We did that during the workshop. We'll move on to item three is invitation to the audience for discussion. Anything? All right, let's go on to item four, considering approved the minutes of the regular meeting of October twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wells. Second by Mr. Friedman. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is General Manager's Report. Mr. Gavon?
Mr. Chairman, members of board, I want to discuss December's meetings. Today would be the time. Do you see we have December the ninth and the twenty-third? Do you all want to keep those meetings up there or...
Twenty-third wouldn't be good for...I don't think it'd be good for us.
What if we split it to the sixteenth like this one?
You want to do one on the ninth and then if we need to have one on the sixteenth, we'll be, maybe we can be available for that if there's anything pressing?
Well, just move it to the sixteenth.
Pardon?
What do we need two meetings for?
Well, if there's anything pressing.
That close together.
I'm just saying if there's anything pressing. Just leave that option open in case we need to have a meeting.
For a special call, you mean?
Yeah, for a special call.
Okay.
But otherwise, just keep it to the ninth?
Regular schedule.
Regular schedule, yeah. All right.
Okay, and then, Charles went to, I sent him because I wasn't available that, I think it was the sixth of November, it was on a Saturday, to the public owners, what is it? Property owners who care up at South Parielen, discuss some information and updates from the Water District, including the THM issue. And I guess they were okay with the results, Charles, that, you know, they're okay with...hopefully that we complied with the THMs already. They picked up the samples and we'll be done with that. Over with notices. Hopefully, there won't be any notices anymore. And the other one that I have here is raw water for Port Isabel Park. I attended that meeting last Tuesday and they approved it. A few questions, but nothing too serious on it. So they approved the park with irrigation with raw water.
Okay, when do you guys expect that to get online?
Victor can answer.
It's going to run within the next couple of weeks, try to finish some other project that we have going on and then we'll move on to that.
And that's all I have. No questions?
The, I'm going to say a Time Warner Cable situation on the island. I mean, did they violate procedures on that as far as having the line sprayed or, I mean...
I mean, we had our utility spotted. The fault that they had was that there was only one employee working at the time, boring across the street. There was nobody on the other side. It was only him on one side of the street. So, I know we've already gotten with the city itself, and then they're going to build Time Warner Cable for the street improvement and then we're building up for the damages that we have to replace the line and all our work that we're doing.
Yes, sir. Last week.
Can you bring that up on line?
I'm sorry. Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions for the General Manager? All right, let's move on to item six is District Engineers' Report. Mr. Ortiz, Charles.
All right, my first item was benefits of tax bonds versus revenue bonds. And really, what brought this up is we got the comments back from Reclamation to get the feasibility study to check complete. And the only outstanding comment was to have more discussion on demonstrating our financial capability at the district. And so, basically, our analysis to do that advanced water treatment as a Title XVI funded project, we would need to issue, you know, additional debt to cover the non-federal share of about three point nine million. And so, I asked Adrian, our, Gavon, our financial advisor, to run the numbers and see how that would affect us. And so, I had that attachment here on the meeting to where that first sheet just shows our current debt service with the two thousand seven revenue notes. And then, you know, we have a debt service coverage ratio of two point one. And one of the bond test requirements is you need to have at least a ratio of about one point three nine to be approved to issue revenue debt or revenue-based bonds. And so, the second sheet here is the debt service if we decide to issue three point eight million today without a rate increase or nothing. And so, basically, that would take our debt service ratio down to one point four, one point three nine, which is too close for comfort. I mean, you wouldn't want to do that, you know, with our current rates. So, that's basically one of the, you know, conditions if we, to show where we're at today in terms of our net position or, you know, our ability to issue revenue notes. So, basically, the third sheet here is the, turn it to the next page. These are, this is, as a revenue note, for needing three point eight million, our bottom amount would actually have to be this four point four seven five, where the first line is deposit to project fund of three point eight million would be the actual dollars we'd want. And the debt service, the debt fund deposit of three eighty-four thousand twenty-nine. When you have revenue notes, you have to put a one-year annual payment in reserve. And so, that would be that number. So, the benefit of a tax bond is that would not be applicable. That number would be zero if we had a tax bond. Probably tax itself would cover your service versus the one year in.
Yeah, but we've got, we've got three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars laying around. We don't have to borrow money to put it in reserve, so, you know, that can go away.
Yeah, well, I think in, like, with the, I know we had this conversation with bond counsel with the two thousand seven deal where we built the account over sixteen months with our annual reserve on that one, you know, just to point it out.
Okay.
And so, anyway, that's really what the item was about, just with tax bonds, you get a lower interest rate, you know, and so, and you don't have to have that annual payment in reserve. But that, that basically is the first item. I don't know if there's any other questions?
But the big thing for tax bonds is you have to have voter approval.
Right. Going through elections.
Go through that election.
Yeah.
Okay. So, anyways, that's, that's that one. I guess moving on to the second item, if that's right, it's just giving an update for our, for our moving, our relocating our asphalt pipe for the Port Isabel sewer plant. We're working on the major amendment, so we should be looking at having that ready at the December meeting for signature so we can submit the major amendment to TCQ to move our pipeline out to the new location.
Awesome.
All right. And then, the third item here was the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority on Veterans Day. They did have a public hearing and so, I mean, just at one of their quarterly public meetings, we are participating in the study. It's that one we paid, you know, three grand for and whatnot. And so, I mean, I went ahead and included the slides from the meeting in your packet so you can just kind of be in the loop for what was presented at the meeting. And it is a, you know, a three county, they're looking at the water supply needs for Cameron, Willacy, and Hidalgo, and the planning year goes out to year twenty seventy. So, it's a pretty comprehensive plan. And really, you know, some of the findings where they're at at this point is that after we've exhausted, you know, seawater, I mean, the surface water rights, the available groundwater, I mean, there's no way of eventually getting around to seawater need to meet the valley's, you know, water needs. So, as far as, you know, like, how it ties into our seawater plant or that location, I mean, they're looking at by the year twenty fifty, this really would be the trigger for a need of a regional seawater plant on the island for about twenty MGD with a future expansion to get it up to eighty MGD within that planning period. And so, as far as, the other thing they're looking at is when they build a second causeway, we need to be prepared ultimately for a sixty-inch pipeline, you know, if we ever get a regional, you know, water plant put together on it.
Yeah. Well, fortunately, I don't think any of us will be around when that happens.
Yeah, exactly. So, it's pretty far down the road.
Well, I'd rather be out in the arse lot.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that was interesting, though, is they were thinking for the buildout of the seawater plant, I mean, they're thinking that you'd probably need to have about thirty-five acres. And so, I don't know if that's one thing we want to consider at this point is to just go ahead and get land acquisition, just to be sitting on it and own it our name, you know, just basically look at considering the thirty-five acre purchase today.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, the bonds that we've passed on desalination are based on seawater only. Am I correct?
That's proposition two, Chris.
What would it take to have that revisited to where it would be seawater brackish or mixture thereof?
I mean, my thoughts are bond election, but, you know, maybe it's a legal question.
Well, the only reason I'm saying this is after going to some of the workshops, wherever it was, I don't remember. And I was always a proponent of desalination until I saw the problems they were having in much clearer, cleaner water than we have here with marine growth that is much less than we have here. Huh. We got problems, guys, with a one-hundred percent seawater desalination project. That was just a question. That's just something I wanted to ask.
Yeah, and one of the things, I mean, just kind of on the, just kind of getting the highlights from the slide on the regional planning, they also looked at typical household water bills for twelve thousand gallons per month. And I believe this is just looking at the rates within our three county area. And so, the median was about forty-three dollars and thirty cents and our RO rate for twelve thousand gallons is about thirty-three dollars. We're about ten dollars below the average. So, we're on the low side, you know, when you look at the three counties. But that pretty much wraps up the main points of the presentation.
Okay. Any questions? Let's move on to item number seven, Director of Operations' Report. Victor?
Mr. Chairman, for the month of October, for the water taps and sewer taps, we had about, we had seven water taps and five sewer taps. On the meter, on the meter testing we did for the month, we did swap out five, five inch meters and still with the same thing, the transmitters are not working properly, so we had to change those out. We did test one inch and above, we tested about, it's about seven of them that we tested for the month of that size, and they all came out ninety-five percent accurate, so those are all working good. So, we had those in good condition. We had a, we talked about that water leak over on Sunset. We also had a sinkhole on the studio over by Mr. Thomas's neighborhood over there. They had a storm drain that was built, maybe about three years ago. I guess with all the rain that we had, we had been coming along, the connection they had, kind of that box that they, because they had a trench there and with the box, the storm drain box there as well, the drain, it kind of sunk a little bit, so it kind of broke the pipe that was, the connection of the pipe. So, we had to go in there and we fixed it up. It's ready to go. And then, also with the one over in Laguna Vista.
Mr. Thomas, do you have a question on that one?
Yes.
We own the wastewater, the storm sewers?
Storm drain? No, no, that's the city.
That's the city?
Yes.
What are we doing fixing it?
It was our sewer line that, because we have a...
Okay, we had a sewer line break that caused the problem, the washout.
Yeah, their storm drain crosses in between our sewer line. They have a casing on it. And with all the rain that came in, I guess the box, the storm drain box, kind of went, sunk down a little bit, so the casing kind of broke the connection that had sewer line on there. So, we went in and we fixed it. We are charging the city over.
Okay.
And then, well, we are charging Time Warner Cable as well for the water leak over there. We had, at the Port Isabel wastewater plant, we did have a TCQ inspection this last month. They had one finding that we're going to be needing to use our SSDC funds on it and we need to get some automatic feeders for the chlorine and SO2, mainly the chlorine is what they want. I think we did have it at the beginning of budget time, but we did take them off, but I think we're going to have to use the SSDC funding just to order them. And it'll be for all four wastewater plants. So, I think roughly, I think we had an estimate before about fifty thousand for all four wastewater plants to get them. So, we're going to have to go out for bid on that and present when we get closer to it.
Okay.
And that's all I have for October.
Any questions for Mr. Valdez? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, how are we doing on the corosail over there at the bus barn?
They're still working on them. They did all this front section, well, first off, they chipped what they could and then they put the corosail and they painted. Now, they're moving up to another section. I tell them, maybe get the corners of the buildings that were the worst ones, get those up first and then we'll go up to the middle section. I'll do that.
Have we looked, got any prices on the banding for the stabilizing strap?
No, I need, what I need to do is get with Parsons, the gentleman that came out the last time, he's no longer with them, so I got to talk to your salesman that come down here. But I'll get that, I'll get that going.
All right, any further questions?
Do we have a estimate more or less on the Time Warner Cable, on the bond that we fixed over?
I know we were still getting some last minute because we got to get the, also the, how much water we spilled out, the water loss. So, we're still working on that, but as soon as we get that, we'll send it out to them.
More or less, what do you think?
More or less, it was from four thirty to about almost one o'clock in the morning. I'm looking at maybe between, how are you, ten, ten thousand somewhere on it, something like that.
I would estimate about twenty to twenty-five.
I know that the...
Could be. It was a big bike.
Yeah, it was a twelve inch, wasn't it?
Sixteen inch.
Fifteen? Time Warner's good at that. I don't know how many times they've drilled through sewer lines over there.
And they, they get it right in the center, so...
So, rates will be going up for Time Warner on the island then, right? Once they get our bill. All right. Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Item eight, Director Finance's Report. Sanwana?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just to let you know that, as you know, the audit is going, the auditors are still doing some fieldwork. They are done with customer service receipts and deposits with all the billing procedures, reconciliations, bank reconciliations, investments, payroll, and all the workers come audit. And they're still, you know, working on the payables, the fixed asset inventory, and the policies, especially purchasing policies. We are hoping that by this Friday, they should be done with fieldwork, which is going to give them another week, you know, between their group and my group will be working on the governmental gaffees reporting. And so, hopefully, by the next meeting, we can present, they can present some...
Okay. So, the first meeting in December, probably?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I told them that I would like to see the draft by the thirtieth. Hopefully, you know, we can have it by the thirtieth. As soon as we have something, I'll let you know.
Very good. Any questions for Sanwana? All right, let's move on to item ten, nine, I'm sorry, nine. Considering removed from the table the following item table at the Board Meeting of October twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, which is considered for review and authorization, the depository agreement renewal from May two thousand and sixteen to May two thousand and seventeen. We have a motion to remove it from the table, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Friedman. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, the item is off the table. We'll move on to item ten is the considering approved the depository agreement renewal for, from May two thousand and sixteen to May two thousand and seventeen. Gentlemen, motion, please?
Make a motion, either.
Motion by, motion by Mr. Cantu? Second by Mr. Friedman. Questions, comments?
I'd like to comment next year, you know, when it comes back to it, if we can get it beforehand, so not last year.
Sure, definitely. You'll get it done, yeah. I'll be the first one to tell you.
Ask her.
Yes. What's this proposed interest-bearing account rate escalation cap?
Yeah, what is happening now is that we're getting the point thirty-four in our investment, which is about a million dollars. And they are proposing that now it's going to be no more than point twenty-seven in case that there's any fluctuations, you know, with our investment market. So, actually, they're lowering down a little bit. But, but let me tell you, yeah, I know, it's not good, but the reason is because governmental is not...
They're lowering, man.
Exactly. But governmental is not here to make money on investments. That, that's the real, you know, the reality, you know.
Well, it's...
And basically, on our last quarter, we got nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars on investments. But however, we got free services from them that is close to two thousand dollars if you look at it on the, each one of those items. So, it's kind of like, right now, I think that it's really in our best interest, you know, to move forward with this year. And definitely, I agree. I mean, next year, we'll pull something together. And I heard that some banks are already interested, so the only thing is that it takes a while, you know, to put it together. And right now, like I said, my main goal right now is the audit. So, I appreciate the...
Okay, very good. Okay. Further questions, comments? So, we have a motion by Mr. Cantu, a second by Mr. Friedman. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, we got one opposed, Mr. Wells. Motion carries. Item eleven, considering approved the International Bank of Commerce Golf Course Water Agreement. We're going to pass on that. We discussed it during our workshop and we're going to give information to our counsel and he's going to get with the golf course people and go over what we discussed. And we'll move on to item twelve, it's considering approved Resolution Number one-two-eight-dash-one-one-dash-one-five regarding a contract for the purpose of financing a truck-mounted pipe hunter.
Is this in the budget?
Yes, this is budgeted when we did the budget back in the...
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand for the year.
Okay.
We have budgeted fifteen thousand for a lease agreement and it came out to fourteen thousand two or two...
All right, so, your motion, please? Motion by Mr. Friedman? Second by Mr. Cantu? Questions, comments?
But this was...
Why do we need it?
This is a jet truck that we've been needing. The one we have right now is about twenty-five years old.
The what truck?
The jet truck.
Jet truck?
The jet, the smaller one. That's the one we used here four days ago because the lines are a little shallower than the island in Laguna Vista. Clay pipes? Clay pipes, yeah.
Why did you call it a pipe hunter? Why did you call it a pipe hunter?
Oh, that's, that's the brand of the truck.
Well, that's what threw us off. We've been trying to figure out what it was all day.
We're, we're buying a truck to look for pipes. That's what we, that's what we thought.
Measure.
Yeah. It is.
Motion?
All right, so we have motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Item thirteen is considering approved Environmental Engineering Services Agreement with Ambio Tech for existing sewers, sewer and sledge surface disposal site located at Port Isabel Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is just routine, what we do every year?
No, this is something unique because here at the Port Isabel Sewer Plant, a question?
Mr. Thomas?
How much brains does it figure out? I mean, we're supposed to have a lot of brains over there and there's supposed to be a lot of brains over here, but I find that a kind of a dichotomy and sorts, but twenty-six grand to tell us whether we're going to dump our poop here or there?
Well, yeah, and it's also a closure plan if we end up going that route.
Well, why can't we dump it right here where we have an area to dump it in? It seems like that would be the cheapest route, Gerald.
Well, for wastewater, we have a monofil that's in our permit here in Port Isabel. There's sixteen acres behind the sewer plant that's permitted to dispose the sledge and we stopped doing that in the mid-nineties because it caught on fire.
Because what?
And so, it caught on fire. It got too high because it was mixing with branches and it was, but, but basically, we just stopped using it and only hauling. So, so, basically, in our renewals that come every five years, we've just left the same monofil in the permit with each renewal phase. But if you're going to permanently close it, you're supposed to go through a closure plan. And also, in the existing permit, we're supposed to be doing groundwater monitoring, methane monitoring, and none of that's being done at this point. And so, this study is just basically a plan to either debate whether we want to restore that monofil that's in our existing permit or just proceed with a closure plan and leave alone.
They hauled us all the way to La Gloria.
We hauled it to La Gloria.
We're at La Gloria.
Um, it's on that road after McCook, when you said...
From the corner, from the corner where the blinking light, right or left?
Um, I know it's at the point where you start turning north and then you'll see that landfill when you're way out there. Like, it's the only one...
Take a left on seven, ten seventeen?
Yeah.
Left or right?
I think if you come into McCook, you go right and then, and then the ten seventeen turns back left again.
Well, sounds like...
Well, I could be off. I mean, I'm going off, well, a couple of years ago when I looked at the map, but it's way out there. I mean, it's, it's, La Gloria is, it's probably not literally in La Gloria, it's wherever that landfill is at, there, out there that they got permitted.
They're coming from a different way. They're coming from a different way.
Two eighty-one.
Yeah, two eighty-one instead of going up to the seventeen.
Did we, did we have this last year?
No, this is a one-time thing because since we're doing a major amendment and we, the monofil's permitted, but it's not in use. I mean, we really either need to do a sewage sledge transport form and go through all this, you know, that requires a certified groundwater geologist to restore monitoring that we're not doing in the first place. So, there's a lot of complications to keep it in the permit and, but even with a closure plan, you still got to do three years of monitoring, you got to put some kind of cover on it. So, it's not a straightforward yes or no condition. And then, on top of that, one thing I also include in the scope of work was Water Plant Two, because, you know, we've made several attempts to clean that lagoon with no success and that sludge lagoon's full. And we need to find out a plan of what we're going to do with our sludge at Water Plant Two as well. And so, this is really the study that's going to give us our budgeting plan, you know, the way we're going to proceed with design and construction to resolve everything.
Okay, and we have a line item in the budget for engineering services?
Well, I put this, I'm going to, you know how we put the engineer's budget for the admin, like, that's where I'm going to use that money for this.
Okay.
Well, this is in the budget.
We have money there for engineering and the admin, yes?
You guys have discussed this, so that's...
No, we didn't discuss this, but this, we had money there for, in case.
We have a lot of them, but I don't know what it's got.
Yeah, I mean, part of their engineering aspects of it is getting like a preliminary plan for the new sludge basin, so we'll have to do at Water Plant Two at some point.
Are they going to apply for the permits for us or...
Well, Corolla's doing the permit, but if we have to do an amendment, that they have time in there to do any modifications. Because, I mean, a closure plan is supposed to be included with a major amendment and so if, if, if the findings on this report are a closure plan, well, then we'd have to do a closure plan. If we decide to keep it open, well, then we have to do a sludge management plan and a sewage sledge, you know, method of how we're going to, you know, monitor or do what we're going to do out there. So, it's complicated either way.
Okay.
Sounds complicated.
All right, any further questions, comments? We have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Cantu? Second by Mr. Friedman. All those, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen is considering approved Change Order Number One for the rehabilitation of the existing filter control system of Water Treatment Plant Number One.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, sorry, yeah, for this filter control, we had our kickoff meeting, I think it was Tuesday, the tenth, and as we were going through the filter control system, we started realizing, realizing there's a lot of external issues that we really need to look at to make sure our filter system is really being optimized and running like it's supposed to be. And so this request is for five thousand dollars to have an expert come down from Richmond, Virginia, and give us a full assessment, um, on, on our needs, uh, for the filters. That was that one. Yeah, question, what's going on?
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah. Uh, isn't water treatment plant number one one of the, the water plant that Corolla came in here and did all the studies on?
Corolla? No, they have not looked at water plant one at all. I mean, basically, uh, the, the, W Water Tech, who we, we gave the award to back in September, I mean, we, they, they basically came to us saying that the, uh, our control system...
They only went through the wastewater plant.
Right, right, Corolla was through the wastewater.
Okay, that was just that, that answered the question.
Okay.
Awesome. Further questions, any more motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wells? Second by Mr. Friedman. You are? No further questions or comments, all those in favor say aye? Opposed?
Nay.
One, one opposed?
Uh, you got it.
Okay, Mr. Thomas opposes. Uh, motion passes. Item fifteen is considering approve plant tower press software with Pitney Bowes.
Um, well, this is it, is, um, the software that will give us the option to create the capability to email the bills to our customers. Um, this will eliminate the postage expense and also some issues that we've been having with the, with the billing procedures as well. And, uh, also, will give the, the options to create graphics if necessary, or to send, uh, special messages. Now, sometimes we have to submit, um, messages, it's the bill that you have in front of you guys. And, um, and you will have, uh, the, the barcode, like, you, if you open this in your mobile device or your computer, you can actually, um, click in there and you're, you pay your bill. So, this is something that, um, we do have, um, the expense, uh, in the budget to cover this if it's approved, but, um...
Yeah, and they're under...
Payables.
Okay, but it would be covered under what part of the budget?
What happened is that, uh...
Capital improvements, or...
We're gonna cancel a portion of a pro- contract that we have, and then that's how we will be covering it.
This is gonna replace it, this is gonna replace it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So prove your process, billing process.
Awesome.
You'll be able to email now, uh, and the, the, the software that we're getting can actually decipher if you flagged it. Um, it'll automatically send out an email instead of a statement, so now you're gonna save money on, on postage and not sending out a statement. In addition to that, uh, with everybody's smartphone, you, they can actually click that QR code at the bottom of your statement, pay it, and it's paid. You don't have to come in or delay, so you're gonna see your money quicker. And you're gonna receive a, a, about a five percent savings on the email, starting off, and it, it just keeps growing.
Awesome.
Especially for a lot of our out-of-town visitors, they'll, they'll, they'll have to receive their bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now when people come in with their, their stuff, they can actually spin that, that barcode.
That barcode, yeah.
It'll pull up the account immediately, so the people save the payment, and now everything's automated, electronic.
Okay, awesome. All right, very good. We have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Friedman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item sixteen is considering approve ink code software renewal, renewal with Tyler Technologies. Just a renewal?
Yes, the renewal.
We have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wells? Second by Mr. Cantu. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? No opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen, considering discussing code modules purchase and implementation for fix ax- fixed assets and inventory software? Sanwana?
Yes, sir. On this one, I just wanted to mention at this time, you know, basically, some of the issues that we having with the audit with fixed assets and inventory. It's passing, so we're going, moving forward. The only problem is that it's taking us a lot, a lot of time, because it's manually, we're doing experiments and stuff like that. And, uh, on the inventory, we're about to get our license, um, uh, ended, expired, um, in, I think it's this month. So, basically, we're still gonna have to buy the one that we have, the renewal, or we could get one with ink, ink code, which is the, the system that we have with everybody else, so that way this system can kinda like get, um, you know, uh, come and go pretty much with all the systems. So we will know, like, when the purchases are made, everything is covered, when someone is, you know, uh, pulling an in- inventory, we will be able to see it. And on the fixed assets, we're talking about, I don't think it was, it's expensive, because it's about ten thousand dollars, but we have ten millions worth of assets. So I think it's worth it, you know, to spend some money to manage those assets and make sure that we don't have any, any future issues on that. Because like, right now, for example, with customer service billing payroll, we don't, we do have the modules, and it's the audit, it was done in two or three days. With all capital assets, it's two weeks. So, and the hassle, you know, of having any issues, it really, you know, will provide us a great benefit if we get those modules.
And?
But we don't have the budget right now.
We don't have a budget right now.
We're looking for, uh, for possibly, uh, early January, February, we, uh, we get our revenue coming in and, uh, possibly make a, uh...
You, you, you had, you had in your budget, you had twenty-six thousand dollars for capital improvements. Is that already all spent?
Hmm, no, you have removed my capital improvement budget.
I, I thought that was the revised budget, I thought, you don't have anything in capital improvements in your budget?
No, what I have it, it's already in.
It's already spent from that, that iCloud thing, the server thing.
You just sold us on it, you ain't got the money?
Right.
No, no, no.
That's exactly right.
Sounds like a good idea.
Every, every, every year, every year when we get, when the audit, when the, every year when the auditor presents to us, they always mention about...
Yes, sir.
They always mention about...
The fixed asset inventory.
Fixed assets and inventory, they always mention about that, that the ink code, we should have it in ink code.
Yes, and, uh, just to mention, I mean, and with my previous employer, I implemented, uh, the system once, and then, you know, we have, uh, the program kinda, the, the program kinda like, uh, was too small at certain point, you know, uh, to cover that, uh, system that we used to have, because we have so many assets, that, uh, we needed to get another program, a bigger program. I implemented that, so I know that I do have the experience, you know, to manage, um, the, the facilitation, facilitization of that implementation with, uh, our new system. It will create a different type of, uh, managing, because it really, it's a waste of time, you know, when we, you have to enter so many things.
I, I, you know, I, I know, but it's, it's, it's seventy-four hundred and fifty-dollar initial investment cost, correct? But then it's ninety-nine hundred dollars a year to maintain it.
Yes, yeah.
Ninety-nine hundred dollars a year worth two weeks, two weeks of work for an employee, I mean...
Yeah, but, and not only that, you know, it also, um, it will avoid any type of fraud or waste, you know? It will be, like, easy to detect any, any type of those issues, you know?
We haven't had, we haven't had any issues since I've been on the work, don't we?
Oh, but the thing is that on the audit, like you mentioned, and every time there's an issue. But, you know, I mean, you don't, that's why, you know, you wanna make sure that, that you keep it, you know, well managed. And the other thing is that, especially when we're dealing with grant or bonds money, that needs to be very detailed.
I, I, I tell you what, I, I would, you know, love to see this, when you guys come up with the money, bring it back on the agenda, 'cause I, I don't wanna approve it when it, when it's not in the budget. To be honest with you right now.
No, no, yeah, I understand, yeah, that's why I wanna kinda like to touch bases with you guys, so you can understand that this is something that we really need.
But, you know, if we... I mean, if we do...
It's a discussion item, and, uh, when, when we do come up with revenue in the three, four months from today...
Well...
We'll come back and ask...
And it's gonna be a wet winter these days, so I, I don't, I don't see the money popping up, gentlemen, well... All right, so we're gonna pass on this, gentlemen, until we get the money? Uh, it's passed on until we get the money?
I'm in favor when you got the money.
We're in favor when you got the money. All right, item eighteen, considering approve dispersments? Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
Question? Um, on page six of the dispersment, we bought, uh, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents worth of scheduled eighty chemical line. How many feet? And I know that's scheduled eighty PVC, so we have no size and no feet, but four hundred and thirty-three feet of pipe, a lot of pipe to just, uh, for chemical feed. Three hundred feet of what size?
Three hundred yards?
Three hundred yards, nine hundred feet.
I wanna say it was, uh, it was over a hundred yards from the old plantation building, the church.
What size?
What size?
Uh, it was one inch wide.
One inch, one inch scheduled eighty, okay. Okay. Um, on page, dun, 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 the only question I have here is, uh, where am I going? I've lost my mind, okay. How old is, uh, repair unit number twelve?
Old.
Yeah, what year is that truck? The truck, right?
Year twelve, yeah. Uh, I say it's, uh, maybe six, maybe seven.
Okay, it's not a new truck, okay. Um, phew, another question on page, dur, 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 eight. I'm looking at here, guys, and, playing Northern Tool and Ranger, work tools, work tools, work tools, hand tools, equipment, hand tools, equipment. Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, over eighteen hundred bucks worth of pipe wrenches and channel locks as well. It just seems like...
This is, uh...
Tell them to quit losing the tools.
I mean, it's, it's, the tool that, that they use every day, and, uh...
Yes, I know. But you can bring them back.
It's not only...
When you dig them out of the sand, when you get done with the job...
It's not only for one department, and we have eight, eight departments out there that use tools.
But just one month and eighteen hundred bucks seems like a lot of hand tools. You can buy a lot of pipe wrenches for, okay? That's all I'm saying.
I, I had a question, since we're on page eight, are, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, I, since we're on page eight, I had a, Mitchell One, what is that, Mitchell One? Sixteen, sixteen hundred and eight dollars, what, but what is that? But what is that? Mitchell One Software.
Oh, that, that the mechanics, the mechanics, uh, machine to, to do the updates, like, on repairs and all that?
Okay. They got new software, they got new software?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then up, page ten? We have to pay sales tax, or why, why are we paying the state controller five hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents for interest and penalties? On page ten?
I missed that one.
It says we're paying the Texas State Controller five hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents for interest and penalties. On page ten? The last one.
It's not on any of the reports, right?
Yeah, there it is.
I got it. I saw it.
Right here on...
Where, where you at?
Page ten on the bottom.
Doesn't have any information, but it is, uh, state controller.
That's the last item, why?
I'm glad you got it.
I, I haven't seen that one before. I, I don't know, that's why, that's why I'm wondering, yeah, I've never, you know? We're not, we're not selling anything, are we?
No, no, no.
Not sales tax?
No.
Can you get back with us on that?
Yeah, interest and penalty on what?
I'll get back to you on that one, sorry about that, yeah.
I have to, we're gonna have to get back to you.
Make, make sure, hold that check.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, I, I thought that was kinda interesting when I saw that one. And then, one further question on, on the dispersments, I see we're paying temporary help, is that just for when the audit's being done?
Yes, hopefully.
So that'll be ended, the temporary...
Well, next one, we have another water audit.
Pardon?
We have a water audit next, next to that audit, the regular financial audit, we have a water audit.
A water audit?
Water audit.
Yeah, but we, we got somebody doing that for us, why do we need temp help for that, though?
Well, they're gonna be asking me a lot of, uh, reporting, and, uh, also, I'm also doing the regular duty, so I don't know how that's gonna work, but I'll do my best.
All right, that's all we waited for.
We got a, got a head on that one.
We're paying him to do the water audit, we shouldn't have to do any work till he lays the audit down in front of us.
Oh, no, every time that we get a consultant, we need to provide a lot of reporting.
We have to provide the information.
A lot of work.
Yeah. Yeah, the comptroller's, well, I can't figure it out either.
Yeah, I'm glad you picked up on that.
Aren't we tax exempt?
It said interest and penalties, was I, I thought that was kinda strange, so... All right. All right, be it that there are no further questions on that, we have a motion, please, to considering approve dispersments, you wanna do it minus that comptroller one?
Yes, pending, pending, yeah.
Pending review of that, is that, is that okay, Mr. Lucio?
I, I typically don't advise my clients to not pay state agent.
I told you we had the smartest city in the Red Valley.
You are, you are exactly correct.
However, if you would like to look further into that?
Yeah.
No, it's already paid, that's the thing, I mean, if anything, you have to ask for it, if there's any issue, yeah, but definitely I'll get back to you guys.
Okay. All right, then we ain't getting them back.
Maybe you can revise the motion that, you know, you see further information.
So moved.
Just see further, all right.
Yeah, definitely.
We got a motion and second on this?
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Thomas?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wells, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, is the executive session permitted by the Open Meeting Act, Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-zero-one? Under Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultation with the, the attorney, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-two, deliberation about real property, consider and discuss the pipeline easement across the Garcia family property. Do we have a motion to go into the executive session at six forty-five? Motion by Mr. Wells?
Five minute break.
And a five-minute break after we go into executive session, ever second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're on a five-minute break. Motion, the, motion to come out of executive session at seven oh four PM? Motion by Mr. Cantu to come out of executive session? Second by Mr. Wells, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
One opposed.
All right, one opposed. So, we are out of executive session at seven oh four PM, all right. Uh, item twenty, is considering an action on executive session items if necessary, there's no action to be taken. Item twenty-one, meeting, be it that there's no further business of the water district meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.